Okay, we'll call this morning's meeting to order. First thing, I guess, is we just to let you know that Kevin and Jenny are on the phone with us this morning. And with that, we'll start out with approval of the agenda.
Move to approve.
Second. Okay, we got a motion to approve the agenda. That's presented. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Aye. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Okay.
If I could, when they're on the phone, we actually have to go do a roll call.
Oh, that's right.
So we'll have to individually call roll on all...
Are you gonna do that?
Yes, I can do that, yes. Commissioner Haney?
Aye.
Commissioner Whalen?
Yes.
Commissioner Campbell?
Aye.
Commissioner Mojo?
Aye.
Commissioner Gross?
Aye.
With 22 agenda items...
They'll just add a couple hours.
They're gonna do that to us this morning?
I'm sorry.
Okay. Do we get any citizens in there that wanna speak, or... Okay, I can't tell who's citizens here, who's workers, or... Did you get any call-ins at all?
We did not, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Okay, with that, we got the three employee recognitions we wanna do today. And the first one we're gonna start out with is the 15-year one, which is Rachel Schmidt. She's got 15 years.
I just wanted to say a little something on Rachel perhaps, is alright? So Rachel's been with us obviously for 15 years, all in child protection, which in and of itself is amazing, and she's laughing in child protection that long. When I feel we come to you and talk about that all the time, she's our shining star example, that doesn't always have to look like that. She started in assessments and investigations and has transferred over to the child protection intake, which she's completely kind of revolutionized that intake, brought technology into the fray. She's out there doing mandated reporter trainings for various mandated reporters in our community, educating from the whole folder, people from schools to law enforcement, you name it. She's also a standard protect trainer, which is a curriculum based on eliminating child sexual abuse, so she's volunteered to take on that, charged to eliminate sexual abuse in our community as well. So she trained a bunch of people on that. I just wanted to say those words for Rachel this morning.
Okay, thank you very much, Rachel. Congratulations.
Thank you.
And all of the flags saying present in the grateful recognition of 20 or 15 years of us standing, dedicating service in Clay County and as citizens. And the next one we got is Michelle Rory. She's got 20 years of service in there. Glad to see it's all German names here today. Okay, Lori, she works for you, I think it?
Yep. I stole Michelle from the HR folks a few years ago, and she's been with us and she's done an amazing job. She's come up with a lot of great ideas on how to streamline the process, and truly grateful for all the work she does.
Thank you very much. Congratulations, Michelle. And then Holly, another... Well, Michelle with 20 years and Holly with 20 years also.
Thank you.
Okay, we got Rhonda Sia.
Yes, I am so delighted we were able to speak on behalf of Holly. So Holly started with us, actually probably 21 years ago, because she started as an intern. So we were so fortunate to have her intern in child protection, and then shortly thereafter, we hired her right into the child protection caseload. So she has that experience, that dreaded caseload that we kind of introduce a lot of new staff to. From there, Holly went to disability services and worked in disability services for a number of years, and now has been our supervisor in our disability services area for a number of years. So the thing that just really stands out about Holly and anybody who knows her, she is just calm, she has just got this approachable demeanor, very kind, very attentive to detail. She just has all those qualities that you want in a supervisor and friend, and so I just really appreciate the work that she's done.
Well, thank you very much. Thanks for being with us, Holly.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, with that, we go into the approval that we got minutes from September the 15th and September 22nd. Move approval.
Second. Second.
Okay. We'll let Jenny get in there, one of them there. Jim made the motion second by Jenny to approve the minutes from September 15th and the 22nd. All in favor? Oh, wait a minute, roll call, here we go. Sorry.
Commissioner Haney?
Aye.
Commissioner Whalen?
Aye.
Commissioner Campbell?
Aye.
Commissioner Mojo?
Aye.
Commissioner Gross?
Aye.
And, Mr. Chair, I would just note that in the September 15 minutes, that the section in page four on the Corona Relief Registered, excuse me, Accounts Payable Management, we ensured that the dollar amount was listed at $24,000. That was not mentioned in the motion, and so that's included in our document for 15.
Okay. With that, we go on to approval of bills and vouchers. Have we been presented, or are they laying over at Kevin's desk? Don't know.
Move to approve.
Second. Okay, we got a motion by Grant, second by Jim to approve the bills and vouchers. Our county administrator will again do the roll call.
Commissioner Haney?
Aye.
Commissioner Whalen?
Aye.
Commissioner Campbell?
Aye.
Commissioner Mojo?
Aye.
Commissioner Gross?
Aye.
Okay, with that, we're gonna go into our weekly update of COVID-19. We got Kathy McKay here, Cheryl and Jamie back to give us a update of what's happened in the last couple of weeks.
Good morning, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. I'll just go through some of the numbers, the current numbers that we have. So you can see that our number of positive cases is 1578, that's for Clay County. We have over 104,000 total confirmed positive cases throughout Minnesota. We're at 41 deaths, we had that additional death, I believe it was last week. So we were at 40 for a long time, and now we're at 41. The number of deaths in Minnesota is over 2,000. In the United States, it's almost 210,000, but then globally, it's over a million now, so a number of deaths for COVID. We have our 14-day case rate for 10,000 people, and that's the one that we are working with K-12 schools. They use that as one of their data points in regards to determining their learning model in their school system, as well as many other things, items that they're considering in their school. They have a guidance from MDH. So this is just a data point that they're also considering, and it's at 40.92. So if it's, the recommendation is, if it's over 50, then the schools would really be looking at all distance learning. But at 40.92, it's remained consistently around that in the last few weeks. In Clay County, currently, we have around seven that are hospitalized for COVID, and then we have one that's in ICU, so the numbers are low. We still have capacity, according to Sanford and Essentia, there's still plenty of capacity for those that need hospitalization or intensive care unit beds. I think that's it for the data. Do you have any questions? And then I'll turn it over to Cheryl to talk about our testing site information from last week.
Okay. Kevin or Jenny, you have any questions concerning the data?
No, thank you.
Okay. We'll move on to Cheryl, are you taking that next?
Yeah, so last week, we had our no barriers community testing event at the Morehead Armory that ran last Tuesday, Wednesday and Thursday. So on Tuesday, there were 510 people that went through, Wednesday was 429, and Thursday 430, for a total of 1,369 individuals who were tested. There still are some tests that are being processed, but so far, we have 68 individuals that were positive out of that. The event, I believe, from everything, we went over there a few times during the course of the week, went very smoothly. People were very happy that they had an opportunity on this side of the river to get tested, so I think it went well.
I think they handled it very well out there. I did go through myself, and it went very well, and they had good people out there working on it. And I think the test right now is not as invasive, or whatever you wanna call it, they are, it's just sort of a, they only go in a little ways, and it's not as invasive as it was before, so...
Right, they were using the nasal swabs for last week's testing versus the nasal pharyngeal that goes much further up.
Yeah.
So I also wanted to mention too, is that we are having a county employee flu shot event this Friday. I believe Kathy sent out an email to everyone yesterday. We're trying out a new system for scheduling so that people can pre-schedule themselves for their own appointments, and can also enter in their demographics and their insurance information. So if anyone has any questions, you can certainly call our clinic at 218-299-7777.
So where are those, where's that gonna be happening at?
That is gonna be in the Family Service Center in Meeting Room 4, this Friday, October 9th, from 8:30 to 4:15.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Do you wanna mention other opportunities?
Yes, we will. There's also other opportunities, of course, in the community to get flu shots. I believe Sanford is doing some Saturday drive-through clinics, Essentia is doing something similar, I don't have the details of that, and of course, all the local pharmacies, I believe, are also offering flu shots. But if anyone is not, if county employees are not able to attend on Friday, I have been getting some emails, so we'll certainly try to be flexible and make sure that they have an opportunity to get in and get done. Also wanted to mention for county employees, if you have family members that are under your county insurance, they are welcome to come as well, they just need to get registered or scheduled.
Okay, and again, this is just for county employees and their families over here.
Correct.
Okay.
Thank you.
Jamie?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Just wanna talk a little bit about testing, and then also to just do some clarification on isolation and quarantine in Minnesota. So testing, CDC and Minnesota Department of Health are really focusing on identifying asymptomatic individuals in the community or pre-symptomatic individuals, so what they're trying to do is provide more opportunities for testing for people that are not able to go into their healthcare provider and get tested. An example was the event we had at the Armory this past week. So right now, if you have symptoms, or if you've been identified as a close contact of someone who has been tested and confirmed to have COVID, then you can go to your healthcare provider and be tested. But giving the opportunity to be tested in the community like we had last week allows us to see what's out there, and to anyone who's asymptomatic or pre-symptomatic, not having symptoms can be tested if they identify, even though the numbers are low, we already have 68 in our community that were identified as positive, who can then be isolated. And so that means what isolation means, and there's some confusion with isolation and quarantine, so we wanted to clarify that. But isolation means a person has been confirmed to have COVID. And so what they do is remove that person from others until they're well. And so there's an automatic 10 days, and it may even extend after that. They have to be fever-free for 24 hours. So if you think about it, that person is known to be ill and to be contagious, so we're removing them from the community, and that means staying home the entire time. And so then, if a person is quarantined, it means that they were actually exposed to another person. And so it's confusing to people because then you have to stay home for 14 days. And so the reason for that is any time during that 14-day period, you may develop symptoms, and so, or you may be actually asymptomatic, a person who's asymptomatic and also, you know, positive, but you just don't know it. And so removing them from the community for 14 days, having them stay home that entire time, is because symptoms can come between day one and day 14. Typically, it's during day five and seven, so that's where a lot of the confusion is too, because people are going to get tested. Well, in Minnesota, being tested doesn't, it's like the Minnesota Department of Health, Chris Ayersman, our infectious disease director, said it's not a get-out-of-jail-free card, like in Monopoly. You don't get to go out of quarantine if you were tested, and even if it's negative, because you could be positive on day 12, day 13, day 14. So there really is no need to be tested, but if you choose to be tested, you still have to stay quarantined or home for that entire 14 days. And really, if you did get tested, you would probably wanna get tested again at the end of that 14-day period to be sure that you are truly negative. But it's not necessary if you just stay home the entire 14 days. There is a lot of confusion about that in the community, and people are getting mixed messages. But in Minnesota, it's basically science-based, that that is the period that you could develop symptoms. And so, again, it makes it much easier for us to really have a good handle on what's going on in our community if we have more and more opportunities for testing. So they are improving that, they're doing, if you've ever had a strep test at the clinic, they'll do a rapid test right there, and then they'll send it to the lab. So they're doing more and more testing, and so it will be available in our community for COVID as well, so...
Of course, you're sort of emphasizing, in Minnesota, is it any different in North Dakota, or Wisconsin, or any other state? Do they do things, I mean...
The governor did announce some guidance in North Dakota last week, and so that's why we are saying that, because in North Dakota, what my understanding from the governor's press conference is that if they're wearing a mask, then they're not considered a close contact. But the science is not saying that if we're wearing masks right now, and we aren't staying six feet from each other, that we cannot contract the virus. And so that's why we're stressing, Minnesota is still following that, even if you are wearing a mask, if you are within that six-feet distance, and that's why we're spacing out six feet, because the best way to protect each other is to maintain that six-foot distance, because when we're coughing, or sneezing, or right now when I'm speaking, the virus can travel, and it'll eventually fall down, but it can go that distance. So that's why the six-foot distance is recommended. The mask is really helping for the splatters, you know, that's what it's doing, is preventing the splatters. So that's, nothing has changed in Minnesota, we still have to consider a close contact anyone we were with in six feet for more than 15 minutes cumulatively. So that means if you were with someone, you know, for five minutes, talking with them in close contact, even if you're wearing masks, and then later you're with them for an extended period of time, it's a cumulative time of contact with that person who could potentially be infectious.
Has anything else changed in Minnesota as far as being open? Because I noticed now, there's a bank, I saw lobbies open, you know, before it was always locked, you had to come by appointments, but now the lobby is open. Are there some different things that have happened in Minnesota where we're changing as far as who can open, who can't, or...
Not to my knowledge. The guidance has been the same, if you're able to ensure that six-foot distancing, then you can have, and part of it has to do with staffing levels, if you have a lot of staffs that are out, or, you know, then each business is making decisions based on what their staffing level is, and whether they're able to maintain that guidance of the six-foot distancing and masking in their business. There was some new guidance that just came out for businesses, but it had to do with contact tracing within their businesses, and I haven't had a chance to review that, but that was the newest guidance that came out for businesses.
Okay, thank you. It looks like you got more to say.
Just one more, I think it's on a positive note.
I could tell that through your mask.
I'm gonna get a mask that covers the whole face. We, Morehead, was picked for one of the 10 semi-permanent sites across the state. Now, I think we talked about Duluth opening up a saliva testing site, they were the first site, and they were open for a couple weeks, few weeks now. So we were just on a conference call yesterday, and Morehead is one of the nine other sites that they have chosen to set up semi-permanent, semi-permanent meaning it'll probably go through the end of this year, but it'll be a saliva testing site, no barriers again. More information will come, we just had a preliminary meeting to say we will have a site. There will be no staffing needs for our public health department, so that is good. The company that's going to provide this will staff it, so we won't, there won't be additional burden on our public health department for that, but I'm sure they picked our site because of the upstanding public health department that we have, I'm sure that was a factor.
You know, to put that down on the record. Excuse me, Jamie, did you...
I was making this more comment, I said, I think they call it the squeaky wheel. Well, maybe I threw in a plug for Morehead.
No, it is a good thing that they, very good, yeah.
I think it gives an additional opportunity...
Yes.
...for people to get tested, and anytime you have an opportunity, we've had so many times where folks in Clay County went to a static site, is what they called it, in Fargo, and many, many of our citizens used that site because we really didn't have anything in Morehead. So they were good stewards, allowing to include Morehead in that, even like the higher ed testing, they did NDSU testing, the governor's office from North Dakota allowed our higher ed to be included in that. So they've really been great partners in allowing us to access their testing site, but this gives an opportunity for us to have one on our side of the river, and so I think it's, I think it's great.
Yeah, I think we can see from the stats that are going on, this COVID is not going away yet, so...
Right.
It's still here, so caution all people, still be careful.
That's correct. Still wear your mask, six-foot distance.
Okay.
You know, those are, those are what our factors are right now, before we get the COVID vaccine at some point.
Okay.
Okay. I have just one other quick, it's non-COVID related, but if you'll look at the FMXter sometime when you get a chance, we have our resident expert, tobacco coordinator, who is talking about vaping and how that is exploding among teens, it's a huge problem. So anyway, recommend you read that, there's some very good information about the health effects, et cetera, so...
Yeah, I see that FMXter's giving us some good coverage each week on our meetings and stuff like that, very good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming and giving us your report again. Okay, with that, we'll go into the CARES Act committee update. Please, our county administrator, Mr. Larson, and HR director, Darren.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. It's been an extremely busy but productive week, as you can probably tell, or two weeks, as you can tell from the agenda today. I think I just first wanna start out and just acknowledge the work of our commissioners in a leadership role during this process. I knew that, I think we knew from the beginning that this was not gonna be necessarily an easy task, but I think their leadership through this, identifying the needs that they feel we can focus these dollars on, talking to their constituents to find out what are the needs, I think has been extremely important. And for us employees, our role is to be here on a daily basis to deal with these different things, but one of the side points of this has been our commissioners are meeting at least twice a week, and having some additional work that they do in between those meetings, so we appreciate that. Just wanted to touch on a few different things from an update perspective. Business relief program on phase one, as of last Friday, we received all the affidavits from the businesses and nonprofits that met the first criteria. That list has been submitted to the auditor treasure for payment, and we hope to have checks out?
Hopefully this week.
Hopefully later this week. And so I know we've had a number of citizens that have been reaching out just to make sure that they, that we received all the proper paperwork, and so I just wanna confirm that we have, and then hopefully those checks will be out here later this week. Phase two did open up this week, or excuse me, last week, on October 1st at 9:00 AM. This round, we're focusing on employees, our FTEs of 20 to 50 businesses. This program's going to run through October 15th, and I think it's important again to note, and we've addressed this before, but it's, this is for all of Clay County, and round one, there's a city of Morehead application, and the remainder of the county, there's one site that we can go to to get that information. And we've tried to push this out, to give this out as much as we can to our citizens and businesses. We've purchased the ads on Facebook, they can go to the Clay County webpage, the information is on all of our Clay County city webpages. The Morehead Business Association has also shared the information. Derek LaPointe has been going door-to-door in some cases to get that word out, and so we just wanna make sure that our citizens take advantage of this, if they're able to. To find out more information, you can go to claycountymn.gov/covid-relief, and that website will give you the guidelines, eligibility, and also the application process. We're continuing to work on the long-term care assisted living licensing, excuse me, and license agencies to address with our CARES funding, our resiliency piece. We're hoping to have, be contacting those licensing agencies here within the next week or so. And then I just wanted to give a couple brief updates on some of the projects that are going on that are in relation to our county infrastructure COVID compliance. This board recently approved a leasing space at the Morehead Center Mall for our DMV. We hope to have a contract signed here within the coming days. Our county attorney's office provided some feedback, and so we're having just a little bit of back and forth, and hope to have that taken care of by this week. I think we've received a lot of positive comments, and the citizens are excited about this movement, so I think it's an opportunity to well-span. Lori and Chelsea and IT have been working closely with Jay Steenerson, our contractor on the project. Demolition has gone very well out there, and so at this point, it looks like a move is going to be able to take place in November 12th and 13th, with an opening of November 16th. So lots of positive things happening out there. Our multipurpose space is coming along as planned, they've almost completed demolition, there weren't any huge surprises. We're working on moving some ceiling, ceiling issues there, but most of those were anticipated, and so that's moving along. We've been fortunate to get that pretty nice weather here this fall, and so this past week, we were able to pour the concrete for the public health storage garage up on 15th Avenue. And so that project is moving ahead now, we're waiting for, we're waiting for the kit to come, I guess, for that building process. And so, as I mentioned, we have a number of different items that are on the agenda this week. Darren has provided this board with an update on our CARES spending, and so I think you all have a handout?
Yes, we do.
Okay, I'll have a handout on that this week, and so with that, I'll turn it over to Darren.
Okay, well, you pretty much stole all my thunder, so I don't have a whole lot to say. The chart that I had handed out is what you've seen similar in past weeks, and what the CARES committee has obligated with board approval. This chart reflects... This chart reflects what you are going to be voting on today. So if everything is approved today, then this is what this chart will look like. The one thing that you may look at that wasn't last time you saw was this chart reflects a $700,000 move from public health into the county infrastructure. And then if you look on the back of your page, that is everything that adds up to what we have spent so far, and the things highlighted in yellow are the things that are going to become, be coming in front of the board today. So those will be each talked on as a special agenda item. As far as the Phase Two goes, we have spent, we spent $981,000 on the first Phase One for the small business grants, and we have about $719,000 remaining for Phase Two. Phase Two will consist of businesses that are 20 to 50 employees, and the application process will be open until October 15th. Today, as of right now, I checked it this morning, we only have five applications, so we're hoping that the advertisements and everything and the word of mouth gets out to the companies that are within Clay County. This will include both Morehead and Clay County businesses from 20 to 50 employees. We do have our teams reestablished. It's myself, Mark Sloan, and Mandy Olson from the county, Sherry Falwell from Dilworth, and Karen Lauer from Barnesville, and then our two representatives from Morehead is Forrest Steinhoff and Kristy Leschowski. We did have a meeting with them on Friday, so I think we've got the application process pretty much figured out, and now it's just a matter of getting applications so that we can screen them and get them processed. So far, the board has committed a little over 70% of the funds that have been allotted. But the chart that you see here does not include the Phase Two small business applications that we're in right now, so. And I think that is all I had to add.
Okay, I guess, I mean, I've really been aware of your advertising and stuff like that, so I would hope that everybody is aware of the applying for these funds, and if they haven't, I don't know, can they still? Well, of course, it is still open now for the
Correct.
For the second Phase Two of it, you know, so
Yep.
I mean, get your funds in there, and what about, I mean, sometimes there were funds given out before. Now, how do we know whether they're applying for the same type? If they got funds for something before, how do we know that they're applying for them again? Do we have any record, or do we know?
That's one of the things that we're going to be doing. We had that discussion on Friday with the city, and before we approve or send out anything, we'll check our list, and we'll check the city's list to make sure that somebody isn't applying and was awarded something in Phase One and then applying for Phase Two as well. So we have some checks and balances there that we'll screen that list before we approve anything.
Okay. I mean, it's not that I don't want people to apply for stuff, it's just that there has to be some checks and balances that
Yep.
We are not just
And this is kind of how Phase One started, too. We started off kind of slow and then really picked up towards the end. Hopefully, that'll be the same case for Phase Two here, because I would think we would be seeing more than just five applications right now, but that's kind of how Phase One started, too, so.
Okay. Well, we did have quite a bit of funds there to hand, what was it, over $7 million to hand out, so I hope businesses, if you feel you were affected by the COVID, you know, let us know about it, you know. We can't help you if you don't let us know about it, so that's pretty much the way it is, so.
Yep, absolutely.
Okay, anything else we got there?
I have nothing.
All righty. Thank you for that.
Thank you.
Okay, now we've got a public hearing and approval resolution 2020-30 for a two-year residential property tax abatement program.
I'll move to open the public hearing.
Second. Okay, we've got a motion and a second to open the public hearing. Who do you think there is, Steve?
Commissioner Haney.
Aye.
Commissioner Whalen.
Aye.
Commissioner Campbell.
Aye.
Commissioner Mojo.
Aye.
Commissioner Gross.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. If you recall back in September 8th, Lisa Bodie came before this board looking to extend and make Morehead home a two-year tax abatement. That program's roughly been going on for about eight years. They were looking for a two-year extension on that. Our board unanimously voted to extend that program, and hence we have our public hearing this morning. Before you this morning, you have a resolution 20-30 for your consideration. Again, this will provide property tax abatement on residential property for the fiscal year 2021 and 2022. If approved, we'll be reaching out to other cities and agencies, cities and school districts within the county to see if they would wish to also participate. With that, I'll yield for any questions.
I guess my first question is, do we have that resolution available, or?
Does anybody else want to?
It's on the, yeah, it's on the back.
Oh.
Back side of your
You can make the motion to adopt the resolution.
No, not yet. Is there anything, anybody wants to speak to this? Yes, Karen, go ahead. Karen from Barnesville, I think.
Yeah, thank you very much, commissioners.
Would you please come forward to, you can use Steve's mic there on his desk, or? Karen Lauer from Barnesville, okay?
Thank you very much. I very much appreciate the commissioners' consideration of this resolution. Earlier, I had submitted a letter on behalf of the City of Barnesville to the commissioners, thanking them for having this program in place in previous years. And as I indicated earlier, Barnesville certainly benefited, but the county has benefited significantly by the tax base that has been created, and I'm confident that without this program in place, we would not have been able to build the number of new homes in Barnesville that we have. It comes at a critical juncture for Barnesville in that, as we speak, we're completing construction on a 60-lot new residential housing development. The city has invested $2.6 million in this project, and I've had inquiries already from folks saying, will there be a two-year property tax rebate in place should we purchase a lot in this new development? So to continue the momentum that we have in place, it's critical that we are able to be competitive with Fargo and West Fargo. And on behalf of the City of Barnesville, I would urge the commissioners to vote in favor of extending this program for another two years.
Okay, thank you. That's great to hear that Barnesville is moving along good on this. Okay, anything further? Anybody else wants to talk about?
I'll move to close the public hearing.
Okay, we've got a motion to close the public hearing. Jim says second. There you go. Okay. And we've got a second. Any further discussion? Not take that roll call thing again?
Commissioner Haney.
Aye.
Commissioner Whalen.
Aye.
Commissioner Campbell.
Aye.
Commissioner Mojo.
Aye.
Commissioner Gross.
Aye. Looks like we had an extra one there with Jenny.
I'll, Mr. Chair, I'll move resolution 2020-30.
Okay, we've got a motion by Grant, second by Jim, to approve resolution 2020-30 to extend it two more years. Any further discussion? All in favor? Excuse me. Wrong word.
Commissioner Haney.
Aye.
Commissioner Whalen.
Aye.
Commissioner Campbell.
Aye.
Commissioner Mojo.
Aye.
Commissioner Gross.
Aye. Okay. Okay, now we've got the reallocation of CARES category funds from public health outreach and service category to county infrastructure.
Good morning again, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. When we came to you a number of months ago with the allocations for funding in each of these categories, we did this with the understanding that we may need to adjust them based on demand of services. One of the things that we faced during this time is originally, we were given a deadline to spend it by December 1st, then we were told we might have December 1st plus 90 days, then we were told that we might have to have, stretch these dollars into 2021, all to circle back around to say we have to spend them by December 1st. And so, well, we initially had made some adjustments during that time. When we thought we were going to have to go into 2021 with these funds, we moved roughly $700,000 into the public health outreach and service category. The second portion of that is we also thought that we were going to be looking at potentially a vaccine or max vaccination during this timeframe, and although it sounds like we're getting close, that doesn't sound like that's going to be an option in, potentially in 2020. And so the request before you this morning would be to allocate $700,000 from the public health and outreach and service to our county infrastructure slash COVID compliance category. In the document that Darren handed out, that would, that shows that we would be in compliance or we would have funding to cover all of our requests to this point. You know, our goal is certainly, from the beginning, is to spend the dollars that are most impactful to Clay County, with the understanding that with December 1st approaching, we don't want to give any of these funds back to the state of Minnesota. And so we're working to make sure that we get these dollars to agencies and areas that will make the biggest impact, and so, but the request before you this morning, so I'm saying we may be back again, but the request that we have this morning for you here is reallocating $700,000 from public health into the county infrastructure COVID compliance.
I'll make the motion to approve the request.
You've got a motion by Grant, second by Jim. Any further discussion? Kevin or Jenny got anything that I've missed out on?
No, I think Steve covered it fairly well. It was kind of a shot in the dark for us to allocate exactly what the funds were, and we didn't really know how everything was going to settle out, and I feel like this is really the best way to address that.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think by the time we're done, we might have to do this a couple more times, but I certainly agree with the proposal.
Very good. Okay, with that, we'll call. Whatever you call it.
Roll call.
Roll call, excuse me.
Yep.
I'm losing it.
Commissioner Haney.
Aye.
Commissioner Whalen.
Aye.
Commissioner Campbell.
Aye.
Commissioner Mojo.
Aye.
Commissioner Gross.
Aye. That brings us on to the item number six, which is the allocation of CARES dollars through the resiliency fund to the Veterans Assistance Fund.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
We've got Kurt Cannon with us.
Good morning.
I've asked Kurt to come forward, as you can tell from your packet. Mr. Cannon has submitted a letter, a portion of his request, and with that, I will turn it over to him.
You use that word, mister loosely.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, commissioners. I had the opportunity to apply for CARES monies through the resiliency fund, so I took the opportunity to request $25,000 to an endowment fund for our veterans of Clay County. The word "resiliency fund" plays a big role into this endowment fund. It's the definition of recover quickly from difficulties, and that's what that fund is used for. The endowment fund holds our money. We do not hold our money at Clay County, so it is a senior site. We actually have to request that from the endowment fund, and it's paid to the vendor, not the veteran. The monies from Clay County are going to be a subaccount. We share that account with Cass County, but we are creating a subaccount for this money, so only Clay County can access the money and not Cass. So we'll have the general fund for both and a subaccount for this resiliency fund money.
Is Cass County, you said Cass County, I'm not getting it, but is Cass County getting some from North Dakota then, too?
I did call them when I applied. I called their VSO to find out where their money's at, to request that as well.
Okay.
If they do get money, they'll have a subaccount on their end. So we'll have a general fund for both and two subaccounts. So I did call Chris over there to find out where his resiliency money is. So the intent to this is for veterans, leading up to mental health, or fixing an alternator that will allow them to get to work, to support their family, which leads into anxiety, too, as well. So this fund is our last resort. It's a quick recovery, emergency recovery. We can't wait the time to apply for state grants. So it's not our first choice money. It's our last resort. If there's time to wait for the grant process through the state, we go that route and use those monies. So this is a, I needed tomorrow fund, and it's an emergency.
Okay.
And that's also known as the gap fund?
It is. We renamed it to the Veterans Assistance Fund about a year ago. They thought it was the gap. Some veterans thought it was a gap between this and this, so we just renamed it.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, you've got a motion by Grant, second by Jim. Well, you guys are going to get your name in the paper a lot here. Any further discussion? Roll call vote.
Commissioner Haney.
Aye.
Commissioner Whalen.
Aye.
Commissioner Campbell.
Aye.
Commissioner Mojo.
She probably had a problem with it.
Commissioner Gross.
Aye. You want to check to see if we lost connection, or are we?
I'm afraid. I'm going to call her.
Or she's having breakfast.
Hello?
All right. Sorry, ma'am.
That's all right. I will vote in favor of that.
Okay.
Okay. So we've got an unanimous vote on that. Thank you very much for coming again, Kurt.
Yes.
Nice to see you again.
Thanks for the opportunity.
Okay, with that, we go on to the CARES fund with Fair Board. Steve, you're just going to stay there all morning, right?
I think I'm here till break. Good morning, Mr. Chair. We have, the two next requests are, have to do with, with different agencies that provide, we as a board or as a county provide funding to on an annual basis. When we received their request for next year in 2021, COVID matters were an issue for them, and they had made some additional purchases or have been trying to address the COVID response that caused additional expense. And so the first one before you is the County Fair Board. They had requested additional funding for 2021 in a total of $4,000. They've been working to make sure that Fair Grounds is as COVID compliant as possible, and the committee made the recommendation that because of the responses this year, that we would provide $4,000 to the Fair Board to address those needs. So with that, I would turn it over for any questions or comments.
I do have a question. Now, we've got the committee for the CARES Act that's okaying all these funds. Now, they all have to be approved by the commission again. I mean, the CARES Act, or excuse me, the CARES committee already has said, yes, this is okay, because how do we know to say yes or no to this if, I really don't know what it's being spent on or whatever?
Right. Mr. Chair, and Commissioner Mojo has had some conversations with the Fair Board, and I don't know if she has anything more additionally she could add this morning or not. But, but, no, this board, our committee comes forward with the two commissioners to bring something forward for this board's consideration, so how we have it set up, it does require this board to make that final approval.
Okay, I was just wondering whether the committee itself could approve all these funds, but if you need commission approval, we'll go that route. Very good.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I just want to point out
I just want to point out that if we determine that any internal or external agencies that we help with funding have had expenses incurred that deal with COVID-19, we believe that they qualify for the Federal CARES Act dollars. That's why the request is...
That didn't go good. I think we need our IT department to appear.
And if we need to use some of those funds to replace this thing.
Well, what I will note, because this board is part of the multipurpose room, some of this should go away, and it will be much easier to have meetings like this, and one of the main focuses of that multipurpose room, so hopefully it will.
I guess I just want to make a note, I'm not questioning the committee, because I just feel they have the authority already, you know, but I think they're doing a great job, and I just, if you just need a rubber stamp on it, which we seem to be, because we have, we don't have the application here to know what they're applying for.
We'll get Jenny on here next.
Hello?
Sorry about that, Commissioner Mojo, we'll confer to you in here.
Thanks.
Are you both there?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, we're back on again. I think I was at home right now. At this point, I'd be calling my grandkids to see, to help out. Okay.
I was just going to say, Mr. Chair, if any, on the Fair Board request, I've been working closely with James and Jay on how to use those funds to allow the fairgrounds to go into COVID compliant.
And I agree with that, and I fully feel that the CARES Act Committee is doing a great job on it, and I just wanted to know that, do we have to make the final approval on it? And I guess according to Steve, we do, so we'll go ahead with that then. Did we get a motion on this Fair Act yet?
We have, we have not.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion by Jenny, second by Kevin, to approve the funds for the fair, fair at, County Fair, excuse me. Will they take roll call vote?
Commissioner Haney?
Aye.
Commissioner Whalen?
Aye.
Commissioner Campbell?
Aye.
Commissioner Mojo?
Aye.
Commissioner Gross?
Aye.
Okay, and with that, Steve, we'll move right along to the request from the Historical Society.
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, this is on the same lines. The Historical Society has been impacted by COVID in a variety of different ways, whether that's through loss of gates and the loss of funds through their gift, their, their, blanked, gone, through their memorabilia, and so, they are requesting additional $2,005, $6,000 as a part of the CARES resiliency account.
Okay, any questions on that?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to be, to fund this for the Historical Society for $2,006 of CARE money.
Okay, we've got a motion by Jim.
Second.
Second by Grant to award the Historical Society with $2,006. Roll call vote.
Commissioner Haney?
Aye.
Commissioner Whalen?
Aye.
Commissioner Campbell?
Aye.
Commissioner Mojo?
Aye.
Commissioner Gross?
Aye.
Okay, now, we're going to the security at the east door of the Family Service Center.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As you're all aware, during this process, we have had our campus, campus buildings locked and made our appointments, our citizens make appointments to deal with their county business. As we've, as we get closer to winter here, we have an issue over in the Family Service Center in keeping the doors locked. We have a small vestibule where they contact the different departments to notify them that they're here. At that time, the employees come down and grab, grab that citizen and bring them up for their appointment. With the colder weather, we're seeing more employees who are, excuse me, more citizens who are congregating in that vestibule that obviously isn't made to be six foot distanced. And so, the committee has looked at a variety of different things, and what we have before you this morning for your consideration is a three-month contract with ASP Security. If you were to approve this, the doors of the Family Service Center would be open, and that ASP security officer would engage with our citizens on a variety of different things, but what would be the connection between them and the, and the different departments. Our goal is, again, in this case, is that we don't have citizens that are roaming around our facilities. The contract, the contract before you this morning would be $8,208 for those three months. That covers, that would cover having someone at that door from 8:00 a.m. till 5:00 p.m. straight, making sure that we're working with our citizens to keep them protected and also keep them, keep them warm during that time. If this is something that works well, we may be back before you in November to talk about what the, what the early 2021 could look like.
What is the plan for them? Just, are they going to call the agencies, say, "There's someone here to see you," or...
So, we do have, you know, they have protocol over there, which we've been clear with our, with our renters that wouldn't, wouldn't change, and so, they would have the ability, there's a, there'll be a, there'll be a security phone, but the phone that is already in the vestibule will also be there. So, in, if they're, once they walk in, the citizen can call and come down, and then we'll just have them wait in the waiting room off to the north, and if they don't have it, if they just showed up with an appointment, they would have the ability to contact, contact the floor themselves, try to get that appointment.
So, the phone will still be there, they still have the call up there?
Yes, yeah, yeah.
Very good, okay.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Yeah, my entire time with this board, I've always heard from staff and from public about concerns about public safety within that facility. Now, with COVID and being, having to have, by appointment only in there, we still have, we might have young families, a young woman with kids, and we don't want them standing outside when we're going to be 10 or 20 below zero. And having this person there will help make sure that things stay socially distanced and that we don't overcrowd our lobby. There might still come a time when people might have to wait in their cars, but for now, to allow the best we can for people to wait inside until they, they're called for their appointment, I think is a good thing. And as Steve said, this can, we can, this can serve as a trial for us to see if indeed this is something that would work long-term. So, our CARES Committee certainly supported this.
Yeah, I can see that, too. Oh, excuse me. I can see that, too. It's a lot better waiting in the lobby of the Family Service Center than it is to wait in that vestibule that you can pile two, three, four people in there waiting for an appointment, so this is a very good alternative. Okay. Do we have any motion on that, or is any further discussion?
I would move the contract.
Okay, we've got a motion by Kevin.
Second.
Second by Grant to approve $8,208 to, for ASP to take over security over there. Roll call vote.
Commissioner Haney?
Aye.
Commissioner Whalen?
Aye.
Commissioner Campbell?
Aye.
Commissioner Mojo?
Aye.
Commissioner Gross?
Aye.
Okay, now, we'll move on to, for our change order number one on the contract for the Department of the Motor Vehicle space within the Moritz Center Mall.
Lori was planning to be here also, but just want to have a brief discussion. On September 22nd, this board approved the allocation of $216,000 in CARES funding for the build-out of the motor vehicle space within the Moritz Center Mall. We had had some initial discussions and put in some, some basic criteria of what we were looking for in that facility. As Lori Johnson went out and also Chelsea from Supervisor Motor Vehicle, there were some additional, additional requests that they, they had to bring forward for you totaling There is a change order on, on the backside of the request. A considerable amount of what they're looking for is a restroom and janitor's closet. That restroom was not included in, in the original drawing. As the committee went through there, it determined that that would be probably a good addition in doing so. We also looked at, in the initial drawing, we had all of the windows that went straight down, north-south, and after, after looking through that process, we've looked at making more of an L configuration, so all of our citizens are kind of more in the, in one main area. And then, some just some minor areas, we added some additional wings to each, each, each window to make sure, limit the social distancing piece, even though our windows now are about seven feet apart from each other. We didn't have a window in the supervisor's office initially. The supervisor does help from time to time, but does many things from her office, and so to be able to have access to what her employees were doing or are doing is important. They also didn't have, have any door that would allow you to get from the employee's side out into the public side, and so, they felt that that was extremely important. And then, we just had a change, change in flooring in the break room and the janitor's closet, and then, there's one wall that was added in the camera area to isolate each person getting their picture taken from, from the rest of the, rest of the employees or citizens, too.
This bathroom, that's, is that not a public bathroom?
That's correct. No, it would be just specifically for employees, and would allow them to, you know, stay in that, stay in that area to, to get, to be away from that window as less, as long as possible.
Okay. Okay, any discussion on this? Go ahead, Jenny.
From the CARES Committee, you know, we certainly don't want to have change orders to add to the cost, but this is definitely something that we've looked at and tweaked a little bit and makes the most sense for our staff.
Okay. Any other discussion?
I'd make a motion to approve that.
Okay, we've got a motion by Jenny.
Second.
Second by Grant to approve the change order number one in the amount of $36,693. Oh, excuse me. Roll call vote.
Commissioner Haney?
Aye.
Commissioner Whalen?
Aye.
Commissioner Campbell?
Aye.
Commissioner Mojo?
Aye.
Commissioner Gross?
Aye.
And with that, we'll go into custodial equipment for the Department of Motor Vehicle at the Moritz Center Mall.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. With, with the Motor Vehicle Department moving out into, moving out to the Moritz Center Mall in November, we had reached out or have reached out to the state, who does all of our drivers' testing and licensing, and invited them to come with us to the Motor Vehicle Department. At this point, they've made the determination that they're choosing to stay out on 15th Avenue and conducting their business or continuing to conduct their business out there again once they reopen. So, with that, we'll have some additional custodial equipment and supplies that we would need to purchase to bring to that location. I worked with Georgia, Georgia's here today, and if there's any additional questions. But we have a list of items totaling $8,504.2 that we would be requesting to purchase to supply the DMV. We would consider this as part of, a part of the total move, and so, we would be requesting to utilize this out of, out of CARES dollars for our county infrastructure COVID compliance.
So, if I understand this correctly, we're still going to clean out there for the driver's training?
Yeah.
Driver's, okay. All right. Any other discussion? Go ahead.
If I'm correct, if I'm correct, though, that cost is, goes into that lease, correct?
Yes, she says.
Yep.
All right.
I'll move it, please.
Got a motion by Grant to approve.
Second.
Second by Jim. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Commissioner Haney?
Aye.
Commissioner Whalen?
Aye.
Commissioner Campbell?
Aye.
Commissioner Mojo?
Aye.
Commissioner Gross?
Aye.
Mr. Chair?
Go, go ahead.
Yeah, can we just have Steve, just for a minute for the public again, to remind them what the DMV is that's moving in there and what, what is not moving in there? I, you know, they're sending questions about testing, and I just want the public to know as of now of what's going to be going on. So, if, Steve could just give a, just a one-minute briefing on that, please?
Thank you, Commissioner Campbell. Yeah, I do think it's important, there is, there is a great deal of confusion. I think that a lot of times people, our citizens, assume that both the DMV portion and the testing are the same. That is, is not the case. The testing areas run by the state of Minnesota, and so, at this point, I know there's been some frustration from our citizens that, that they haven't been able to get their licenses, for example, of late, and that's, that's the important part to understand, is they do the written test for the permits, they do the written test for your license, and they also do your, your driver's testing. And so, in the motor vehicle, you're getting your tabs, you're getting your DNR work, you're getting your, your actual car license potentially there for, just for a few examples, and so, that, those are the two main differences. As I mentioned, as of right now, the state, the state of Minnesota does not have our licensing offices open that's run by the state, and so, we are hoping that the next round of consideration for the state will be, will be October 31st. And so, I know that's been frustrating for our citizens to have to drive as far as Detroit Lakes to, to get... far as Detroit Lakes to, uh, to get testing, uh, only to come back to have to get your license, your actual physical license here. I know that's been frustrating, but unfortunately, it's important to understand that we don't, don't have a say or, uh, what's going on with the state in the, in the testing piece.
Thank you.
Okay, with that, we'll move on to the allocation of CARES dollars for the GIS office space into the auditor's office.
Uh, thank you for the auditor's recorder's. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, as you recall earlier, as part of the, part of the, uh, multipurpose space, uh, we did some additional, um, movement of our, you know, within our technology department. Uh, as we've, as we've, uh, had social distancing issues there, we ended up having our GIS department that, that, uh, needed to be moved into a different space. And so, we've been kind of, uh, looking for different options on our campus with the understanding that we know that we, we have very little space. Uh, what we did do is we went down to the recorder's office. Uh, they have a great deal of, uh, of, uh, books and shelving that they have, but, uh, but we were able to do some adjustments down there and are looking to move two of our GIS staff into, into an area on the, uh, would be on the, the, in east side of, of that, uh, recorder's office. Uh, and so we need to put up a, a wall, uh, and that wall would be, uh, $4,500. Uh, that would include, uh, also the electrical, uh, and cabling for, for computers. So, that, I'd stand for any questions.
I'll make a motion to approve that.
Okay, we got a motion by Jenny.
Second.
And we got a second by Grant to approve funding of $4,500 for moving the GIS department to the recorder's office. Any further discussion? Roll call vote.
Uh, Commissioner Haney.
Aye.
Commissioner Whalen.
Aye.
Commissioner Campbell.
Aye.
Commissioner Mojo.
Aye.
Commissioner Gross.
Aye. Okay. I know we're scheduled for a break here, but I don't know if we need one right now. Uh, uh, I don't know if we can do any of the others. Oh, Rhonda is here. Let's go front, front and center.
Okay.
Okay, we're going to go with the CARES Act funding, Social Services Technology Request for, uh...
All right.
For CARES funding? Very good.
Okay.
Didn't mean to make you run.
No problem. All right. Let's see which one is first on the agenda. Um, okay, technology request. I, I do have, um, two technol-, well, one technology request, um, for 25, um, tablets, computer tablets, that we would like to purchase to have on hand at our office for kids that go into foster care, um, so that they could have virtual visitations with their parents and siblings when we can't do them face-to-face. Um, right now, we've been managing it by foster parents or allowing, um, the kids to use their equipment or maybe their personal cellphone. And we've run into some challenges with that. So, we'd like to have these on hand to be able to make that happen. Um, we would also use them for telehealth appointments that children have with their, um, whether it be medical providers or mental health providers, so they could use these tablets while in the foster home to do that. And then, if the placement ends or, um, the situation changes, we would take it back and we would just have it as a checkout, um, option for our kids in care.
So, what could they use these things? I realize you already said that. Could you, they use these for other uses also, or?
Well, they could. I mean, they could go onto the internet and, um, potentially do things we don't want them to do, but, um, they can do that now. I mean, um, we, we would, again, we would monitor it. It would be, the foster parents would monitor that use. It would, like, like, um, like I said, we would primarily be using it for those virtual visits, telehealth appointments, communication with their case manager. Um, they'll be pretty basic tablets, um, uh, with not a lot, lot of capacity or programs on them for sure. We've been working with IT on what to purchase and what would be the most appropriate. Many of the kids are going to be issued, um, uh, laptops from their school, but, um, we would not be able to use, utilize them. We wouldn't be encouraging students to use them for this purpose. And I think they're fairly locked down and pretty limited on what they can do with those laptops when they're issued by the school.
I'll move to approve the request.
Sir.
Okay, we got a motion by Grant, second by Jim to approve the request for 25 tablets with cases. Any further discussion?
I just want to mention, we're spending a lot of CARES dollars today. And on the, all the memo sheets, it, it says what funds we're, um, spending out of. So, I, I would just like the minutes to reflect, uh, specifically where those needs are coming from.
Okay.
Okay, and these funds were requested out of the, I suppose, the technology?
Where's it?
Or are these out of resiliency?
Yeah, everything out of yours.
Okay, these are out of the resiliency fund.
Okay, these funds will be coming out of the resiliency fund. Okay, roll call vote.
Commissioner Haney.
Aye.
Commissioner Whalen.
Aye.
Commissioner Campbell.
Aye.
Commissioner Mojo.
Aye.
Aye, Commissioner Gross.
Aye. Okay, Rhonda, continue on with your stuff. This is a request for the equipment items for COVID-19-related concerns. This is for 12 car seats.
Yes.
For transporting children.
Right, correct. We, um, as you know, we transport our, um, workers, transport a lot of kids in foster care to and from visits and actually to and from other kinds of appointments. Um, we've had situations where we've had kids test positive for COVID or be exposed. And, um, through communication with public health, we are to, um, take those car seats out of circulation for at least 24 hours before we can use them again. And that's created some shortages for us in car seats when we're transporting so many kids. So, we're requesting 12 additional car seats to add to our pool so that we could, um, better manage it when we have to take some out of the, out of the pool due to COVID exposure of kids we're transporting. And these, this as well would come out of the resiliency fund.
In reviewing, in reviewing our documentation, we do have this one coming out of, of the Infrastructure COVID Compliance.
Okay.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion by Grant, second by Jenny to approve the funds for 12 car seats. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Commissioner Haney.
Aye.
Commissioner Whalen.
Aye.
Commissioner Campbell.
Aye.
Commissioner Mojo.
Aye.
Uh, Commissioner Gross.
Aye. Continue with Rhonda. Senior citizen support proposal due to pandemic. Uh, if you can explain that one.
Okay, this is a request from, um, Lakes and Prairies Community Action Partnership, CAP LP. Um, this is through the resiliency funds. The request is for $25,000. And the bulk of these funds are going to be used for, um, providing some, uh, food cards, gift cards to seniors in our community. The first group is going to be the individuals that are receiving the NAPS commodities boxes that are distributed monthly by CAP LP. They have about 190 participants in that program. And so, when they deliver those boxes in November and December, we're going to provide, um, some food, um, cards to allow them to purchase things that are not in those commodities boxes, like, um, dairy, produce, uh, meats, those kinds of things. Um, in addition, we're going to be offering some of those to our communities, um, senior community center participants, um, as well. So, that's going to be the bulk of the money. In addition, we're going to be looking at providing some mental health services and supports to our seniors in Clay County via the community centers, via the, um, age-based living environments. We're providing some outreach and going to be working, CAP LP is going to be working with, uh, two of our mental health providers in the community to get that support out to our seniors. Um, and we're also going to be developing, um, kind of a specific, um, brochure aimed at educating our seniors about what kinds of resources are out in the community, you know, pre and post-COVID, but also some kind of specific COVID things. But I think there was information not reaching some of our seniors because everything is online and, um, you know, in electronic format. And we really want to get back to some basics so that we can give them something in writing that helps them identify those resources. So, that's another piece to this proposal.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Another item that we've talked about is, uh, CAP LP runs their rural transportation, um, bus, if you will, for folks to get, uh, to and from. And so, we've talked a little bit about their ability to broaden that service with some of the, these dollars.
Okay. Any further questions for Rhonda? Here's where you do your thing, Grant. Thank you.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion by Grant, second by Jenny to approve these funds. Roll call.
Commissioner Haney.
Aye.
Commissioner Whalen.
Aye.
Commissioner Campbell.
Aye.
Commissioner Mojo.
Aye.
Commissioner Gross.
Aye. Okay. You got more?
No, that was it.
Okay. Because we got time for you anymore.
I could come up with some.
Here's where you can hire a few more people. No, excuse me. Uh, uh, we don't, let's see, Julie's not here. Do we have to wait on the interview?
Yeah, I think we have, we have an interview.
We have to wait on it?
Yeah. Mark is Mark here?
Mark's here.
Oh, Mark's here.
Yeah, sorry.
No, we can, we can go.
Oh, we got Julie here now. We'll, we'll take her, stay in order. Come on up, Julie. Okay, this, um, online training for correctional facility staff. Julie Solak.
Yes, thank you. Uh, we presented with the CARES committee an opportunity for us to expand our training for our jail staff. Um, jail staff for management, management of the Minnesota Department of Corrections for so many hours of training every year in specific categories. Due to COVID, we've had to cancel a lot of our in-person training. Um, this, uh, online training would supplement those areas that were lacking because of COVID. We've already canceled, I believe, two more conferences for 2021. I know for sure that one in February has been canceled, and it looks like the programers one will be as well. So, I'm looking to, um, utilize some of our existing training budget this year for part of the cost of three-year contract and CARES dollars for the remaining part. Um, I'm looking to sign a three-year con-, a three-year contract with Lexi Poll for their, um, correctional one online training.
Any questions for Julie?
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion by Grant, second by Jim to approve the request. Uh, any further discussion? Roll call.
Commissioner Haney.
Aye.
Commissioner Whalen.
Aye.
Commissioner Campbell.
Aye.
Commissioner Mojo.
Aye.
Commissioner Gross.
Aye. Okay, thank you, Julie.
Thank you.
Okay. With that, we'll go into the interview for Buffalo Watershed Board. Okay. Okay, you can go forward and... If you care to identify yourself, we got Mr. Han-, is it Hanson? Uh, Mark, is it Mark?
Yes.
Okay, got that right. Very good. Thank you, Mark. Thank you for replying. And as we've done before, we've got a list of five questions that we ask. You're welcome to remove your mask, uh, if you want to.
Thank you.
Okay, with that, we'll go right into the questions. Uh, what experience would you bring to the Buffalo Red River Watershed Board of Managers? Do you have any experience on, on the board for the Buffalo Watershed Board?
Uh, Chairman Gross, uh, not a lot of experience in the Buffalo River Watershed. Do have some experience in, uh, with the Chamber of Commerce Board, um, in approving the diversion or approving the, uh, support of the diversion in, in about 2010. Um, have had some experience in working with City of Fargo when I was working for the Electric Co-op on their different pumping stations and water rights. Um, so, just a general, a general interest in, uh, the water supply issue for many years.
Okay.
Felt this was a good opportunity to explore that further.
Very good. So, why would you want to be a watershed manager?
Well, I, it, it not only ties me back to a community I've had a long association with in Barnesville. Um, it allows me to do some input in a lot of areas I hunt and fish. Um, and that's primarily...
All righty. Do you have a certain philosophy on managing of drainage? Have you been involved with that? Drainage or drain fields or, um...
Not a lot of experience in.
Entiling.
Pardon?
Entiling and stuff like that. Drain tiles?
Other than farmer friends who have done a lot of it, um, not a lot of experience in the effects of that on a, on a watershed district, but, uh, would be eager to learn that.
Okay, some of these questions probably have been better than whatever, but, uh, have you had any personal experience with the Watershed Board in the past? And if yes, was it generally a positive experience? Or how would your experience affect your service as a watershed manager?
I have not had any experience with the, uh, board in the past. Uh, I do understand there's been some, some, uh, commotion and controversy in the recent year or so, um, and not a lot of familiar with that. Just I, I think that part of that is what created this opening and real interested in taking that as a, I, in any previous board experience, Chairman Gross, it's, I, I see it as a real high-level policymaker and not a day-to-day decision-maker. Um...
Yes.
I, I'm a little confused with the manager name of this. Uh, that confuses me. It, does that involve day-to-day stuff? Is it more higher-level policy decision-making as a board? Um, so have some questions there.
Okay. All right. Now, Clay County Commission has been a supporter of the diversion project. If appointed to the board, how would you support efforts to achieve completion of this project?
Um, very much in support and have been since 2010, 10 on the chamber board, uh, where we decided early. It was really important both for Morhead and Clay County, uh, to be a part of that project and to have some permanent flood protection. So, fully in support.
Okay. Does anybody else have some questions for the... Jenny or Kevin, you got any questions?
I just want to maybe go a little bit deeper and ask what your understanding of the ditch systems within Clay County are.
Understanding of the ditch systems?
Was that your question, Jenny?
Yes.
Yes, correct. Are you, do you have an understanding of how they work and who oversees them?
I, I don't have a real understanding of who oversees them. Um, I have a lot of friends in the ag business and I understand how they work and how the water moves down to the red and, uh, but not a great understanding of the entire ditch system, no.
Okay. If any other further questions? Would you like to make some statement at all, further, further statement?
Um, Commissioner Gross, just, uh, I'm real interested in learning more about that this whole watershed. Um, have always had an interest in whether it was following the Buffalo Aquifer and City of Morhead, or whether it was working with City of Fargo on, uh, taking water from the Cheyenne. Uh, have just always had a water interest and see this as a great opportunity to maybe make a difference and learn a, a great deal about watershed.
Okay. Okay.
Mister, Mister, Mister Chair.
Go ahead. Go ahead.
Just, unfortunately, I'm not there, so I can't, I can't really see this advocate. But I, just, just so you know, the, many years ago, the county board switched over the county ditch systems to the watershed. So the watershed board that you would serve on does oversee all of the county ditches within the county. And I, I guess I, I don't mind the fact that, that you may not have known that to this point. I think it's important to know it if you were to go in and to take this or be offered it. I do believe that, you know, there are many, many of us that end up going for a board, whether it's a, an appointed board or an elected position. We don't know everything when we go in, but the idea in mind that we're willing and able to learn it is extremely important. Thank you.
Okay. With that, all right.
Mister Chairman, I would like to make a recommendation that we appoint Mark Hanson to the Buffalo River, Buffalo Red River Watershed District Board as manager.
I'll second that motion.
Okay. We've got a motion by the board, but from Jim, second by Grant to appoint Mark Hanson to the board, watershed board. Is there any further discussion? Real call.
Commissioner Haney.
Aye.
Commissioner Whelan.
Aye.
Commissioner Campbell.
Aye.
Commissioner Mojo.
No.
Commissioner Gross.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes, Mr. Hanson. Thank you for coming forward and to be on this board and hope you have a good, I don't know what it says, two-year term or, there's a four-year term?
This is three-year.
Three-year term, excuse me. Okay.
Yeah, thank you, Chairman Gross, thank you, Commissioners.
I'm sure they'll contact you as far as meetings and stuff.
I look forward to it, thank you.
Thank you for coming forward. Okay, Nancy's not up here.
I'm just gonna check in the hallway. I saw her.
I thought I saw Matt here, but he left again. Nancy, you wanna?
My guy's not here.
Pardon?
My guy isn't here yet.
Oh, okay.
For 10:25. I did just talk to Matt, he's just running to the men's room and he said that he could go, he wanted to jump.
Very good. We'll just wait for a minute for Matt to take care of his personal needs. You didn't go into the restroom or the restroom long, did you?
No.
Okay. Let's see, who else do we need after that? We got Matt for the next two. Then we got Brian, Brian's here. And Mark isn't here yet, okay.
Right, Mark's not here, I can, I can talk for two, but I'm just maybe text for him to see if he could.
Well, try and get this done.
Can we do our committee reports?
We can do some of it, you wanna give yours?
I better look real quick here. On Wednesday, 23rd September, Chairman Gross and myself attended a discussion with the building committee in regards to the deep ox issues. And we had a very spirited and lengthy discussion about that and we're going to be entertaining some more input and we'll give future reports about that. I guess that's it for my report.
Okay. Matt, let me take you up here. You ready?
I am.
Okay.
All right, good morning.
We're gonna sell two county-owned properties.
Yeah. Good morning, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. So, a couple of weeks ago, the, the County Lands Committee met about the potential sale of two of our county-owned properties, one in Riverton Township and then one in Elkton Township. I'll talk about the Riverton property first. So the Riverton property is actually the, the west half of that future landfill site. It's about 170 or 187 acres and it's pretty much rural vacant land. So it also has a resource protection biological overlay, that's how it's zoned. It's pretty wet and so it wouldn't be suitable for landfill, whereas the eastern half of that property is more suitable for a, like a demolition landfill. So this, this half is a little, it's a little wetter, just doesn't quite have the suitable characteristics for, for a landfill. And so this was purchased originally by Solid Waste, the Enterprise Fund. And so the, the recommendation of the committee is that that, that goes back into the Solid Waste Enterprise Fund. And so with this property and then with the second property as well, the recommendation of the committee would be to open up for like a sealed public bid and setting a minimum value or minimum, minimum bid for, for both of these properties. And I can talk about the second one too, unless anyone has any questions about the, the Riverton site.
Go ahead and move on.
Everyone really wants to hunt, there's some big bucks on the Riverton site, that's where we get a lot of calls about hunting on that property, so, yeah. The second property is in Elkton Township and I did provide a map for you. It's just north of, of Downer. And it's about 154 acre parcel, so it's roughly a quarter section. Was purchased originally for aggregate resources. It's been prospected by the highway department, there's really not a whole lot there except for maybe some sand, sand material, so some fill material. So this property could either be sold in total or we could look at splitting off a portion of the parcel that might have some of those sand resources and then sell the, the remainder of that. The discussion from the, the County Land Committee and their ultimate recommendation was to look at, at selling off the entire parcel.
Okay. Now, are we to decide prices on this or, or is this gonna be appraised or?
It does, it has not been appraised. I think, you know, if you as a board would like these properties to be appraised, we can certainly start exploring that process. Just talking with the assessor's office and, and looking at comparable value for rural vacant, vacant land such as this, it's typically about like assessed at like a thousand dollars an acre. That's not necessarily the appraised value of the land though. So it could be, you know, it might be a good baseline to start at in terms of what a minimum public bid might be.
Okay.
Unless you, as a board, feel like you'd like to go higher or if you'd like to keep the land or have the committee explore this further.
Okay, another question, the funds for these, if we do decide to sell, the funds for these, that could just goes into general fund then or does it go into someone's?
Yeah, the, so the recommendation from the committee was to, for the Riverton property, since it was purchased using enterprise funds, to have that go back into the enterprise fund for solid waste.
Okay.
But for the, the property in Elkton Township, the recommendation is that that would just go to the general fund.
Very good, I wanted that explained, okay.
Yep.
All right.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I know we've had significant conversation in the last few years about getting rid of these parcels and I know we've talked about the Riverton piece would go back to the solid waste fund, but I, I might suggest we look into further sales of this. You know, those, those county-owned properties that we have are starting to cost us dollars in maintenance, be it weed control or signage or, or the highway department going out to mow or whatever. And it, it might be worth entertaining, creating a, a separate fund to deal with the management of this and so not the entire sale amount going into that fund, but at least something because it's, it's kind of become a thorn in our side of how to manage these properties.
And Mr. Chair, I would say that that's an excellent recommendation by Commissioner Mojo just because a lot of these properties with the, since they were purchased with bond financed dollars through the FEMA or for the Minnesota DNR Flood Hazard Mitigation Grant, we can't really sell them to anyone at all, so we're kind of, we are kind of stuck with them for lack of a better word. And it, it's, I think, crucial for us to, to maintain these properties so they don't become a nuisance or an eyesore to neighboring landowners.
Okay, I guess I can see establishing a fund, but if that fund runs down, then how do we, we'd have to set that up almost as a budget item to replenish that fund or, of course, we're doing it now, so it'd be the same thing, I guess, so.
Well, I think what we could do is look at what either highway or land management has been spending in terms of maintenance dollars and, and just take some of those and roll those into the fund so they continually kind of maintain a, a level. I'm not talking in a, a huge amount, but I definitely know that it's been a struggle to figure out who and when and how we will pay for these things.
Okay, I guess that in itself we can discuss later on too, you know. I guess our first decision today is, do we want to sell this property? So any discussion on that or motion?
Well, I definitely feel that we should sell these properties. I know that the Elkton Township piece, we've talked a little bit about what aggregate resources may or may not be there beyond sand. I've had conversations with our county engineer on, on if it's a worthwhile amount of aggregate resources remaining there and, and he really doesn't feel that there is enough there for, to warrant us keeping that material. So I would, I would, excuse me, be in favor of selling that entire parcel.
And, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
One thing, if you, if you do as a board decide to move forward with the sale, sale these lands, once we receive the, the public bids, if, if any, we could always bring that back to the board for your approval, and I think we'd have to do that.
I think so too, yes.
Yeah, so.
Now, this would be just a recommendation to put them up for sale and we would have to approve the sale.
Yeah.
And the amount here.
Yeah.
Okay.
Good to hear.
Yes.
Hi, can I ask Commissioner Mojo for clarification? She mentioned that she would be in favor of, of selling the entire parcel. I thought we were talking about just the wetland there portion of that parcel, I just wanted to clarify.
I'm sorry, I was talking about the Elkton Township. So for the Riverton Township piece, yes, it's just the west half of it, but what I was talking about is the Elkton Township parcel, there was a small notch that we talked about not selling.
Okay, I think in Riverton, I think they were talking about 186 acres or something like that?
Yep, 187.
187 acres and then Elkton Township, it looks like we're selling a whole corridor there?
Yeah, it's about 154.
154 acres there. Okay, those are the two parcels that we're looking at selling. Any further discussion or motion?
Matt, did you have a timeline on this when you, when you hoped to advertise for bids if we decided to sell today?
I would have to just work with Nancy Cronelka in the, in the auditor's office and seeing how we can, fast we can get a, get these advertised. But I can, I can get back to you on that.
But are we thinking by the end of this year or early 2021?
I, my hope would be for the end of this year.
Okay.
Okay. Me and the committee haven't discussed it, if no one, I will make a motion then to sell these two properties. Okay, we got a motion and a second, any further discussion? Real call.
Commissioner Haney.
Aye.
Commissioner Whelan.
Aye.
Commissioner Campbell.
Aye.
Commissioner Mojo.
Aye.
Commissioner Gross.
Aye.
Okay, motion is approved, we will sell these two. We'll put them, work with Nancy and get her going.
Sounds good.
Okay.
Any of you want to buy some property? Some hunting land?
Maybe a very good investment there in the Riverton project.
Yes, exactly.
For hunting, yes.
Yeah.
It'd be a very good, we should get some interest there.
Yeah, I think so.
And I know I've already got some interest and I think I gave you his name, I hope you still have that.
Yep.
Okay, now we're going to Matt, we'll just, as long as you're here, into developing a comprehensive and transportation plan for Clay County.
Yeah, so, as you know, our, our current comprehensive plan is, is about 2002 vintage and approaching kind of the, the end of its designed 20-year life span. And so earlier this, this spring, or spring and summer, been in talks with the Fargo-Moorhead Metropolitan Council of Governments or MetroCog about contracting with, with them to provide plan writing and, and plan development services to, to Clay County for a 2021 Clay County Comprehensive and Transportation Plan. And so at the Planning Commission meeting in September, the Planning Commission moved to recommend that the County Board of Commissioners contract with MetroCog to develop this 2021 County Comprehensive and Transportation Plan. And so what this plan does is, is it provides kind of a, a vision for the future of Clay County. It could be, you know, for the next 10 to 20 years, probably 20 with maybe a 10-year update. So in like 2031, there'd be, there would be an update to that. The planned components, so this is kind of what the plan would consist of, it would be an executive summary, include a community profile, so kind of describing kind of what the county looks like right now in terms of demographics, housing, natural resources, transportation, things like that. Land use analysis, so our current, kind of what currently the land use looks like in the county, as well as some projected future land use kind of scenarios and what land use might look like out into the future. Transportation would be a big component of this plan as well. And then as, as issues come out or topics of concern come out through, say, the public input process or through the planning process, there are some opportunities for maybe some additional planning strategies, so additional review or analyses related to any, any issues that we might want to dive a little deeper on in this plan. Goals and policies, and this is kind of nice because right now the City of Moorhead is, is doing their comprehensive plan update. Both the Buffalo Red River Watershed District and the Wild Rice Watershed District are kind of getting to the end of their comprehensive watershed management plans. And so that's an opportunity for us to kind of leverage some of those plans and, and some of their. And so that's an opportunity for us to kind of leverage some of those plans and, and some of their, their goals and their issues and, and tie them into.
Excuse me, is MetroCog involved in all of those too?
No, they are not. So those are primarily led by, um, the watershed districts and they're working with private consultants on those plans. Yep, yep. So then after goals and policies, uh, implementation and looking how this plan might be implemented. So this isn't necessarily a regulatory document. Um, it just provides an overarching vision and framework, uh, for the county. And implementation might be something like looking at updating our land development code or writing a new land development code, um, capital improvements and things like that. Uh, so in terms of plan development, uh, the, the core group that would be working on this plan would be a study review committee and it'd primarily be, uh, MetroCog and county staff. And those members could be approved, but would be approved by you as a board. Um, there would also be, could be an advisory committee. So bringing in some other stakeholders, uh, maybe residents of the county, um, aggregate interests or industry inter, interests, um, agricultural interests, um, state agencies as well. Uh, and then public involvement, and that's going to be kind of tricky because we're currently in the midst of a pandemic. Um, but MetroCog has some kind of unique and, um, I'd say innovative ways of, of getting public involvement, public interest. And then the, the level of effort for this planning process is estimated to be about a thousand hours. Uh, most of that will be done by the MetroCog staff. Um, and they, for this plan, they would be leveraging their federal consolidated planning grant funds um, to the tune of about $58,605. And then the Clay County local contribution right now is estimated to be around $18,223. And just to give you some examples for comparison, uh, a typical comprehensive plan like this, if we were going to, um, open it for like an RFP for a private consultant, could run anywhere from 150 to $300,000. So the total cost of this plan is around 78, would be around $78,000. And, uh, it's a pretty aggressive timeline, uh, hopefully trying to get through this planning process in, from Jan, starting in January of 2021 to the end of the year. Any questions at all?
No, it sounds like a lot better thing than we were talking about, uh, about a year ago about updating our planning. And we were, would have had to contribute quite a bit more funds into this. So this looks like a pretty good deal, working with MetroCog and getting this updated, so.
Yep. And they, they've done other plans in the area. Um, and they, the plans that I've, I've looked at that they've done have been very high quality.
Very good.
Yep.
Okay. Any further questions for Matt or, or comments or motions?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion for the county board to adopt this contract, to approve the contract.
I'll put that motion.
Okay. We got a motion by Jim, second by Jenny. Any further discussion? We'll take a roll call.
Commissioner Heaney.
Aye.
Commissioner Whalen.
Aye.
Commissioner Campbell.
Aye.
Commissioner Mojo.
Aye.
Commissioner Gross.
Aye.
Very good. Motion passes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Get her in action then.
And if I could, Mr. Chair, uh, Matt's just done an excellent job on this one. He came on board. This is one of the areas that we identified, uh, identified for, for Matt to look into. And then from a, from a taxpayer standpoint, to be looking at something in that 150 to $300,000 range, to get it essentially to $18,000, uh, it's just a, just great work on Matt's part, so I think.
Thank you.
Okay.
Matt, why do you leave?
Go ahead.
I've had some conversation, uh, as you know, with the Amazon fulfillment center that's going on north of Fargo. There's a lot of material coming out of Clay County for that. And so I've had some calls from the company that's working on, um, on trucking that material. There's been some issues with overweight permits and township restrictions. Could you give me a, a call, uh, later and we can just discuss what they may need to look into?
Yeah, and that, absolutely, I can do that. And that would be something that'd be good to talk with our county engineer, Dave Overbulb out as well. So we can.
Right. I think he's driving a beat truck though.
Oh.
Yep.
Oh. All right. I can, yeah, I will give you a call later.
Okay. Thank you. With that, we'll move forward with Nancy. If you're ready to do your part. Very good. You come forward to repurchase tax-forfeited property?
I think this is Mr. Keel. He has a property at 211 Fourth Street, South in Moorhead, and it went back to the state for non-paying taxes. He is requesting that, um, he be allowed to repurchase the property. I do believe it is your home. Is that correct?
Yes.
It is his home. Um, the county criteria, um, if one of the following conditions is determined to be true, that the county board determines undue hardship or injustice resulting from the forfeiture can be corrected through the repurchase or that the board determines the repurchase will serve in the best public interest.
Okay.
So Mr. Keel, are you prepared? Are you ready to pay these taxes today or?
Yeah. I thought I had already paid. When I got this piece of paper from you guys. I went down here and I've gone up. And, uh, Highland Home Road check stuck at the mailbox. And apparently it didn't reach here. The bank hasn't cashed it either, so.
Okay. So what type of, uh, if we do approve this, what type of timeline are you looking at?
Um, are you?
It has to be done today or?
I can write you a check right now, tonight, right now.
We can do that. I'll have you fill out some forms as well if they approve.
Okay.
I'll make the motion based on that to approve their request.
Okay. We got a motion by Grant.
Second.
Second by Jim to proof the request to repurchase the property. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Commissioner Heaney.
Aye.
Commissioner Whalen.
Aye.
Commissioner Campbell.
Aye.
Commissioner Mojo.
Aye.
Commissioner Gross.
Aye.
There you go.
Thank you very much. And if you take care of that, Mr. Keel today?
Yep.
Thank you.
Thanks. Okay. We'll bring, uh, Mr. Melton and Mr. Sheriff Mark Empting up here. This is an agreement with the State of Minnesota for Criminal Justice Data Network and renewal of court data services documents.
Want me to take it, Brett?
Go ahead.
So this is a agreement that we have to renewal with the, with the Minnesota BCA and it's for the use of our criminal justice network system to where it allows us to run criminal histories, driver's license information, vehicle information, you know, things like that. It's, uh, it's necessary for both our agencies to do our job and to get the necessary information we need. In 2018, they started, uh, charging for this, but goes, you know, go figure, right? Uh, but they didn't charge us in 2018 because we already had a contract in place. So they weren't going to go back and charge us then, but now that we're doing a new contract, now they're going to charge us. And it's $50 a month for, um, both offices. So $600 a year for the sheriff's office, $600 a year for the county attorney's office. Um, it's a, this is something that we obviously both need to do our job, like elaborate. I think, yes, Commissioner Whalen knows or any, to do our job, we have to have criminal history ability to check back to see if people who are currently charged may have previous felonies. Those many times are often enhancements or enhancements to new crimes. So, uh, as it is critical for, uh, deputies and, and Sheriff Empting's, uh, personnel do their job. Obviously imperative for us to do our job. If you really look at the cost, it's, it's actually a, a pretty minimal cost. The fact we haven't had a cost charge in the past was a good thing, but it is now, they're implementing the statutory charge that they can charge and, uh, it's not, uh, it's not a huge cost. And we'll be able to bear that, but we're asking the, the board to sign the, the JPA debate. There's, and when we sign these requests.
Second. Okay. We got a motion by Grant, second by Jim. I do have a question. Do you each have to pay $50 or is this a, a $1.50?
No, it's each for each agency. So $600 for the year for the sheriff's office, $600 a year for the county attorney's office. And there's four total documents to sign.
Okay. We've got a motion. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Commissioner Heaney.
Aye.
Uh, Commissioner Whalen.
Aye.
Commissioner Campbell.
Going to lost them.
Commissioner Mojo.
Aye.
Oh, okay. Commissioner Mojo.
Aye. Aye.
Commissioner Gross.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Okay, um, we do have the next thing is close set, but let's take just a few reports before, if you don't mind.
Okay.
Let's take Grant. We'll take Grant next.
Okay. I had, uh, we had a solid waste instruction meeting last week and, uh, everything is going pretty well there. We had, uh, an update and discussion on, uh, on some of the additional plans that we're, we're working on out there. But we'll have more on that in the near future. Then I had a diversion authority, uh, meeting and we had, uh, uh, updates from the staff and the executive director and, uh, we had, uh, comments and an introduction of the new general for the district for the Corps of Engineers, uh, who is in, in town. And then we had a special session to discuss, uh, litigation issues and that was it for me.
Okay. Jenny, you have any report?
Thank you. Most of my meetings have been covered by issues that we've done today, uh, going back two weeks. We had our county lands committee meeting, those items we addressed today. We had a CARES Act committee meeting also addressed today. I attended Lakes and Prairies Community Action Board meeting, general reports. Uh, financially, they're doing quite well, looking at space needs for the future though. Um, and then talked about, uh, their service delivery methods because of COVID. I had another CARES Act committee meeting last Monday and, uh, we're continuing to work on addressing all the needs, uh, areas that we can with those dollars. That evening, I attended the Moorhead City Council to present the round two of the business, uh, relief grants and also give an update on the long-term care, uh, grants that are available. That evening, I also attended the Buffalo Red Watershed District meeting, a, a very lengthy discussion in terms of, uh, uh, their service delivery as well with their auditor in terms of how they'll deal with possible, um, changes to their, uh, employee structure. And then they had a closed session, uh, for a significant amount of time. They're also dealing with a couple of landowner issues. Uh, also had another CARES Act committee meeting last week, uh, followed by a diversion land management meeting. Lots of important updates, uh, in terms of, um, uh, hearing concerns from farmers and working through their, uh, policies going forward. I attended the Extension Federation County, uh, Clay County Federation meeting last week as well. Great work by the Extension Office, uh, with lots of, uh, challenges because of COVID, but kids are still getting out and doing lots of activities. Uh, we also had a CARES Act committee, uh, meeting yesterday. Uh, basically kind of a rundown of where we are and where we're going. And then last night, the Buffalo Red Watershed District had a special meeting that I, uh, called in, but their only, uh, item on the agenda was a special meeting. Uh, and then fielded some questions from, uh, haulers in terms of those overload, uh, concerns from the township on that Amazon fulfillment facility, but I believe that concludes my report.
Okay. Okay. And I understand, Kevin, you want to bring your report next week?
Yes, please.
Okay. With that, uh, we had the PIC committee meeting on September 22nd. There we were talking about employees that have contacted COVID or whatever. You know, should we close the courthouse and stuff like that, uh, and the family service center? But then we decided most of our COVID contact with employees has been outside of the courthouse area. Hasn't been inside, you know, where they're contacting it. So closing the courthouse or the family service center would not do us any good because they're contacting it outside of the area, I think. So just have to ask employees to be very careful in situations that they get into. Uh, talked about our mask policy and also face-to-face and home visits done with, you know, the waves. And, uh, that has been brought up this morning by Rhonda asking for computers to, uh, so they don't have to do the face-to-face visits. Uh, we had a meeting on detox, which, uh, Jim has already talked about. I guess my question mostly there was why do we have it here in the county? And we found out that it is a state requirement that we have a detox center. But we've also found out that we need to do something with our detox center. The, the damage that is being done there, it's just not set up properly to handle some of the, the people that we are treating there. So we need to do something there. And we're looking into different options as far as what type of money would be available. If we would move forward with, uh, either re-doing that area up there or building something new. Uh, the county lands committee, we also had that meeting. Um, we did have some discussion on some of the cemeteries that are in Clay County. Who's responsible for, uh, for maintaining them? The other areas that we've pretty much discussed at the meeting. Also, we had some discussion on hunting regulations on county-owned land. And there'll be an environmental study done in the Felton Park there too. Yesterday, I attended the virtual meeting with, uh, Minnesota Rural Counties. Uh, you weren't on that, were you, that, uh, Grant? Uh, okay. There they had an annual meeting, uh, they elected new officers there. Um, they approved, uh, well, they have soon meetings because the technology that they got right now doesn't seem to be working. Um, we got through the meeting, but there's a lot of difficulties in getting everybody on there. They also had a, a membership meeting. They had a lot of speakers on, uh, they talked mostly about mental health, you know, and, um, dealing with suicides and the suicides that are going on in the states, uh, that, um, it's also, I mean, that's almost like an epidemic that's going on out too with, uh, with this COVID-19. I talked a lot about broadband, a lot of money, planning, using a lot of money to keep the broadband going and expanding more to counties. Because some of the counties feel that they're being hindered by not having broadband. People aren't moving into the counties because there's no broadband available, you know? Probably the person will take the job, one person will take the job, but the spouse, uh, will probably travel along. But if they don't have broadband so they can work back with their regular job, uh, there's been some turn downs of jobs because of that broadband's not available in the counties. And that was my meetings. Steve, oh, good, excuse me.
I omitted some meetings that I went to when I gave my report.
Go ahead.
Wednesday, the 30th, I was presented the COVID, uh, press conference, uh, virtual. Uh, then later that afternoon, I attended the diversion finance committee in a virtual setting. Um, on the next day, um, Thursday, October 1st, uh, I attended the joint powers committee virtual meeting. And we discussed the upcoming environmental, intergovernmental retreat that's scheduled for the end of January this upcoming year. And there was a very important discussion. We discussed whether there is even going to be such a retreat and if there's going to be a retreat, if it's going to be live or it's going to be virtual. And then we discussed, uh, possible topics for, um, exploring that statement. And, uh, that is my report.
Okay. Okay, Steve, before we get to you. Okay. Okay, Steve, before we get to you, I, I just want to add one thing. I really want to thank Colleen and you for this meeting. We're not looking at 22 agenda items here. And the way you got this, everything coordinated today. And thank you very much to you and your staff for keeping this in order. It was really, we went through a lot of things, but it went okay, I think, so.
Yeah, Colleen, Colleen's, Colleen's the anchor, so we appreciate all her work.
Okay, thank you very much, Colleen. Go ahead, Steve.
Going back two Tuesdays ago, we did have a PIC meeting that's been addressed by Commissioner Gross and Commissioner Whale. The next day, I met with Kirk on a series of solid waste issues. That afternoon, we had the lands committee, which has been covered by Commissioner Gross, Gross and Mojo. We also met that afternoon with, with the building committee and detox, which has been discussed by Commissioner Gross and Commissioner Haney. On the 24th, we had a SWAC meeting. We got updates on the landfill construction project and the expansion closure area of parts of the landfill and the road project that they have going there. The 24th, we had a Corona Relief Virus Committee meeting, which has been discussed already. And that, later that morning, we had county management where we heard updates from Kathy McKay, open enrollment, cares, discussion and our business relief programs. On the 29th, the department had evaluation. The 30th, we had Corona Relief Fund meeting again, that's been addressed. On the first, the first participated in the joint powers meeting that Commissioner Haney talked about. Again, I thought it was interesting. We heard from Superintendent Bryan Lunick and Brian Tigerson. And it's not always necessarily the COVID positives that are, that are providing the most challenges for the school, but it's the quarantines for those who have come in contact. And with the additional staff that they've had to bring on to run their virtual academies, what the challenge of finding substitutes that was already a tough deal has now even become more challenging. And so that was, that was interesting. Interesting to hear the challenges they're facing. Again, we had county management on the first with, we talked about the armory testing that Kathy spoke on earlier. That afternoon, we had an MCC JPA meeting. We talked about property acquisitions. We had a discussion on the post-clomar, updating what the plan is for now reaching out to the citizens in affected by, affected by the diversion, now that we know where the, where the footprint will be. We talked about some real, relocation reimbursements and we got received an update from our, from our land agents. Yesterday, we, again, we had another Corona Relief Committee that's been discussed. There's been a lot of work that's been going on at the DMV at the Moorhead Center Mall, preparing that piece. And then we had continued discussion, meeting yesterday and continued discussions of the dispatch. Just touch on a couple of different areas. Just wanted to note, to make a note on your consent agenda today. A couple of weeks ago, we, we brought forward an issue that the juvenile center applied for a grant through the Office of Justice for some laptops. They did secure that grant. I think they make their education programs stronger, so I thought that was great to see. Just following up with, with kind of an ongoing update, the city of Georgetown had, 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 was, previously been the only municipality that hadn't had not signed the easement process for biotic and geomorphic testing. I'm happy to report that yesterday A2S was able to get before the Georgetown council and they did, did sign that, that easement. Again, Kathy, just, I think they touched on it, but again, our employee flu clinic is October 9th, this Friday, from 8:30 to 4:15 in the, in Family Service Center Room 4 or the chapel. Doing that, just getting that out there again. And again, we're, we're, in talking with Commissioner Chair Gross, we've determined that we are going to hold or host our county and rural cities meeting on October 20th from 4 to 6 p.m. That information will be going out to our cities later today. And I did just want to give a brief update on some of the highway, highway projects that have been going on. County Road 33, just north of, north of Holly is going to be done today. They're finishing up the striping. County Road 8, we've certainly had some challenges out there with the wet summer and fall and wet conditions. Further challenge by kind of our clay bubbling up through the road. And so they've, since last Thursday, they've been removing about a 7,000-foot clay patch on that road and replacing with granule and then class five. Weather permitting, they hope that they're going to be able to get that project done here before, before winter. We had 12 box culverts that we were going to be replacing this year. To this point, we've completed nine of those 12. We're out right now on County Road 68. They're hoping to be finishing that up today. County Road 93 will be the next one up with, with Cassat 21 being, being the last one. And they also wanted to share that they've been having a lot of different issues with beavers and filling up, filling up a lot of our culverts. And so they've been spending a lot of time cleaning those out over the last couple of weeks. And that concludes our report.
Okay. And with that, I'm going to take a motion to go into a closed session and before, and before we do that too, also we'll take a break before the closed session starts.
Thank you. So move.
Yeah.
Okay, we got a motion by Jim, second by Grant to go into closed session. Any discussion? All in favor? Roll call, excuse me.
Commissioner Haney.
Aye.
Commissioner Whalen.
Aye.
Commissioner Campbell.
Aye.
Commissioner Mojo.
Aye.
And Commissioner Gross.
Aye. Okay, we're in closed session. But before that starts, short break. Okay, we're back on now to a regular meeting. Is there any further things to be brought up by anybody? Kevin and Jenny, you got anything to bring up?
No.
Okay. Anybody else, Steve?
No.
Okay, we're adjourned.